I pledge the allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, equal to liberty and justice for all.
Go call.
Mr. Piana?
Here.
Mr. Piana?
Here.
Mr. Piana?
Here.
Cool off the night agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda from 27 to 22.
The ADA grant, you have to cancel that right now because you have some new things to come in on that.
Okay, so. So if we're going to cancel that, what can we at least talk about it so that we everybody know what's going on?
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay. So cancel the bid that we can talk about.
I'm telling you the bid.
All right. Yeah, cancel that bid and talk about it, okay. We're going to talk about it then.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll stay on and talk about the bid. You got it, hold me in there, okay.
Then the other kid. It was more than, I made motion, half circuit.
With the amendment?
Yes, with the amendment, uh, no, with the ADA.
Mr. Piana?
Yes.
Mr. Piana?
Yes.
Mr. Piana?
Yes.
Cool off, personal meeting minutes for December 29, 2022. Excuse me, 2022. Quick motion to approve it.
Just a second. Just a second.
Mr. Piana? Mr. Piana? Mr. Piana?
Thank you.
Mr. Piana?
Yes.
Yes.
Cool off, regular meeting minutes for December 29, 2022. Moving on, we have reports. Police inspector, on here, would you shoot out your report for me? Why he's not here? Huh? In their region, why he's not there, exposed to COVID. Boy, you turn that off. Yeah, I'm about to bring it up.
Thank you.
Oh, as soon as I run the film inspector and the community manager, he's not here. I'd like to bring out the way that code of conduct has been last couple of weeks. He is not the spokesperson to the board, nor will he be. He doesn't speak for us. And what is that all about? All this stuff that's been going on, this YouTube and everything else, and with all these other people, Mr. Piana and stuff, he's on there and he's saying he speaks for us. Now, he almost threatening people. He's threatening to kick people's teeth in and everything else.
Can I enter just for a second? It's not on the clock, he's not on any time, he was a personal phone call. They called me up.
Do we not have in our employee handbook code of conduct? Regardless of who it is?
24 hours?
Town boards members as well.
But if I'm going to reprimand him, then he is being reprimanded as well.
Agreed. For what? A? For what? He still needs to, because this is still a topic for everyone. You're right, work needs to be.
You know, with this, with this stuff going on with this whole stuff and all that, everything, this needs to stop. I mean, this is getting, operations is getting out of control.
My wife didn't come around these days, she had a side trip.
And you calling me to come, what, downstairs?
I didn't nothing.
I thought the original thing.
Okay, enough. No, there's enough, enough with this, this stuff.
But the word did not come out of my mouth.
I think it's.
I said enough. I said enough. We ain't gonna.
Shouldn't you guys be doing this in executive session?
I'm something like that, yes, I agree. So, but like I say, we ain't going to bring up nothing right now.
We're going to prove it. We're going to prove up things often that's what we're trying to do. Maybe we need to go to that, it's handled, I guess, but we'll do it later on.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
On, uh, we want, we want to have the history for it.
We're just grabbing your already.
Your report? Yeah, this one. Yeah, yeah. We don't have any other reports.
Okay. Got the report, we go down.
There's been some, um, I told, um, I told them to get come down and do the business survey.
Okay.
And then sort of leave, um, identify and whatever they buy.
We have that, we have the report. For what?
Um, as far as the well, we're doing good, we have some going off right now, changing the river in the Reshale. The plane around the Reshale well has to fix, fix bottom, fix their lock deep. And, um, just to add a little bit about these days, it's going to be the OR, the first piece of operators by the town, so we hire somebody. We don't have a few light dates for the water treatment, we don't, we don't like.
On this note, prepare with the utility report stuff, I want to thank you step, Sarah, for setting up and doing all the torches stuff.
Does anyone we could turn up the volume or something?
Can you guys move your mics closer maybe when you're talking and sneak into those a little bit more? Because nobody can hear on the live stream.
That's without the tele-.
Yeah.
Okay, I just got, love the table here.
Yeah.
Okay, office report. That is all.
All right. The whole business, Margarita's going for her water sewer tap, we're going to solve Francisco.
And he gave them the intricate, the thing, uh, different things happening, he gives them the coffee by anyway, so we're not asking for the foundation.
And he did, police inspector did say that, put some pump machines present, we're good enough. Well, it's up to the board.
Do you have to admit anything on that?
We have to listen more for you. We need that before, before we go ahead with this.
Is there, is there a structure there? Is there a structure there?
No, right now, if they got there, they're all, they have their trailer there. And what she waiting, waiting for is a sewer, sewer tap, a water gap, then we're going to start, start building. It can be right next door. Uh, the house is right here, drive out to the back. And then there's a house here, and then back from that, there's a trailer right there, that's where she's going to go from that.
I need a motion to listen more for it. I'm making sure that we listen more to you. You, you need to do it separately, for water, I'm sure, water. Oh, separate.
Mr. Piana?
Yes.
Mr. Piana?
Yes.
Mr. Piana?
Yes.
Mr. Piana?
Yes.
Okay, now I need a motion to go ahead and, and grant it. What, what go for?
Oh, is it on?
You got the water, you got, this one, we have it open. So we have a second, we'll leave it open, but we have a second one for water, sticked out for a Richard Sanchez. Right below, Margarita.
Okay, and that's same situation, you know, the address is to be determined, discuss the property line and deal with it whatever you want.
Correct. And if either the property is set, argument, the line of the river is unique, um, find them a house to drive from, make it on the ground.
So once, once they find out that we've awarded this, then they kind of come over with the money, pay for the account.
So a motion.
Both a motion, I haven't made a motion yet. I make the motion, and this on the water, right? And that we, uh, grant Richard Sanchez a water account. And Martin, Bill. Can we do, definitely that, we're going together. Okay, both of them.
Richard, does he want like, very more aggressive than this, yes. Is there one group that's wanting to invest that property, except, you know, this is going to be a different one, people self-protected, you know, people. Or not, people, desired household.
Yeah, it's not a, a property.
Oh, second year old.
Mr. Piana?
Yes.
Mr. Piana? Mr. Piana?
Yes. Yes.
I need a motion to approve the, the, the. I'll make a motion closing, closing. One second.
Mr. Piana?
Yes.
Mr. Piana? Mr. Piana?
Yes.
Mr. Piana?
Yes.
Okay, now, for the unique code for purchasing options, this is one that we discussed last time, and you guys able to?
Oh, okay. It's my fault, we visited the water, we can use sewer, so I need a motion to grant it. So many open that, that, then, or?
No, no, no.
Uh, I gave those, I made a motion for.
A motion for.
Oh, for the delta. Okay.
So all we did is, we delta, got the, got the deal for the water. And I closed that water, and then we closed it, now we.
And I need to open the one for the sewer?
The one about.
Okay.
So it does, does.
To approve it, but I'll make a motion to approve the sewer for Margarita, Margarito and Richard. Sanchez, Margarita.
Mr. Piana?
Yes.
Mr. Piana? Mr. Piana?
Yes. Yes.
Now moving on. Okay, purchasing the, for, 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 I mean, this full code, purchasing options, this is a little bit, we talked about last time. And since you want to table it to this meeting, so. This is the one for the code books and, and stuff, uh, video and all that, but.
We also had workshop on that, because no one really understood the franchise. And workshop actually. And that's for win tickets or violations, or what is that?
Basically, with that in the form of a code book and stuff like that, that's it.
Yeah, to be.
Those were, that was a workshop on that, let's keep it after this time, we just don't make the whole end of that thing.
Mr. Piana?
Yes.
Mr. Piana? Mr. Piana?
Yes. Yes.
The whole business.
Wait a minute, most right per, can we, can we discuss the rent a little bit?
Yeah, go ahead, bro.
Well, I didn't mark much more than I do as far as.
Well, you know, I mean, I, I think we're going to have to redo this thing. What happened was, after we were asked some questions, all the landings have to be by foot. And I talked to Ken about it, and he said, well, he has to redo his bid, so I think he needs to revisit that project. Um, it still is about 42, 43, 45, bid. And I don't think it, you know, got much strength, but Ken can redo his bid. But let's revisit it, just to see who wants to rest around, see when, or we revisit this thing from, uh, 2018? We've been bidding, bidding, nobody wants to put bid in. So it's up to the board, I don't know.
I'd like to make a suggestion on that, because paperwork that I requested, I resisted, tried to make. That bid went out to Walsenburg, uh, World Journal. Let's run this at more place than for Colorado Springs.
Why would we pay for contractor up there when they're getting a charge, just for fuel?
Because we only got one bid in and only for partial, let's make this open to contractors to come in. Yes, there'll be fuel charges. Yes, there'll be a motel for them to stay in, those costs have to go into it, but we could get a quality contractor that could do the entire job instead of just doing this one piece at a time.
Well, you know, we don't have a quality contractor, we play your, I didn't say that.
Well, not when that's supposed to be business.
I didn't say that he wasn't a cost quality contractor.
We got Walsenburg way, whatever, he is quality contractor.
If you're advertising in the smallest town around for a contractor, I'm saying it'll be up to where we get.
Yeah, and it was, as I told you, I got those where they were dead, one was $90,000, the other was $70,000.
And I just sent a single piece of paper off.
I don't have them, I've done, they just call me and go with their want to. If they were, they had jobs up in Springs, they were going to send their boys down here just to do that, and they wouldn't hear you, god damn it.
But the council didn't have the opportunity to look at the papers, because if you compare.
All right, do what, do what, that's fine.
One gentleman, doing a partial bid, doesn't give us the total price, and those $90,000 give us the total price. Because it's more than just the ramp involved. There's rails, there's porch work, there's doors. I'd say that we open it up to more contractors by advertising better.
I love the, I love the chef's wing. I've got a contractor from Puerto Rico that does everything in concrete that Markview Hospital needs done, he does it all. And I, I've dealt, I've been with him, I, I can show you the tips I got from him, that he, he needs more information from me in order to submit his bid. The only reason I have him up back to him was because of this new configuration that we've got with the wider ramps. So that's why I, I need to know that, so I can give that information to him, and believe me, this guy is right.
Right, and so that's why I'm asking for competition, it's what the, our, our, for the.
Right, I agree. That the same one you and I have with.
That's exactly.
That, that, oh, okay.
I personally would like to see three bids, two better than one.
As long as you get three, if I go get two, that'll be it, and the thing is, it's done yet, right?
Yeah.
Here's the thing, let's go ahead, take it right out today, let's go to different places, because at the end and all, the board has one, like, statement table.
Right.
Without the business, and my request suggested bid more than just places, more Walsenburg type, that's seen fucking yet. Let's go ahead and do that. How far off? How far off is Springs, please?
Tiny.
Tiny, how far, how, before we stop accepting the bids? I guess we gotta put a tiny bit on.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I was asking.
Last time we did a parent's win, with, uh, with, uh, with the, uh, everybody, uh, see if, uh, United States could accept bid. That's why I don't want them, there is no, really, a home to Joe, but.
We saw the paperwork on that too, uh, ago, I remember that. So Mark, if I, if I was to tell Joe that we're going to stick with the configuration that we have, right, the only thing that got me higher.
Yeah, so I can buy foot on the things and.
Matter of fact, that's what changed.
Well, we look, simply, they keep Joe with $700,000 specs, away from their current, even though they know they're going to take care of it. So we can see the one hand off, do like we did with the, like, with Ken, do one hand off, we'll look at it, you guys figure it out, and give us a move. And mix it, um, whatever.
There, there also might be a chance that we could talk to them about it, and maybe have been present and, and explain everything to them. Set a date, make them come up.
We can't do that, I mean, past that point, there's only a lot of funding, we often get a grant from the, from our, mostly A green stuff, you want over $100,000, so, I don't like to see the tax. That's, that's a good call.
So a little, little help, God voted, probably go over, if you're sure that should just be between 20 and 30,000.
Yeah, it should only be about that much.
But after that alone, which is 25,000, probably more than 14,000.
Yeah, I don't know what all the things.
Oh, yeah, that's the most, yeah, I think that's, at that point, this guy's like, did everything, have everybody coming in, and do everything, and it's still going to be 40, 45,000. Maybe 40,000, I'm hoping a lot less.
I took a basket, if that means.
So how long, how long you want to get out of the road?
Well, I wish you just hurry that, you just wanted, I should be very careful. Yeah, so for a month, then that would be out by next week.
I need someone to be there, though, you need to see the steps, because those things are crazy. I don't. I think we should press where they all come out on time, so we don't.
And also we did last night.
Yeah, but they, they're interested.
If you don't show up tomorrow, wants to be with me, that's fine.
So you want it from a month?
Yeah.
Well, we got, we got, but, so that's my idea, they're going to be there. I'm not going to be on the wall there, and they want to go to look at it. Yeah. Back, Paul.
So what if we, I'll be on the turn in, the day of, November 28th, Monday?
That's right, I think it's giving that. Okay, but that.
To have it turned in.
Turn it in by November 28th.
Unless you want to do the, see for it on basis.
If you're ready for 30 days, you can do it with Lisa 30 days. But they have to have their bids in five or 28th, and then we can give them an extra. Give them two weeks, give them an extra two weeks. What do you think, so, good thing? So the bid to be in by the 28th, and then.
And might you do the.
I'm sorry, the. Repeated everything done by the 28th, and then from the 28th to the 15th, to the C, to submit their bids, but they can't play.
Everybody agree?
December what?
15th. If you think that's not a weekend.
Have the Thursday, about the 16th.
Yeah, that's on the 16th, right? That's our, everybody.
So what week, in the act, you want me to put the week of December, if that makes you come in, organic before day, sorry, the consumer before that? Because I like to put that.
And, yeah, Mark, I'm going to get all the, and I'll strike you if you, or Mr. Carroll.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Brenner, I got to know what's.
You know what, guys, we've been doing this since 2017. I think I know what that goddamn ADA grant used to look like, but, uh, they're like, oh, some people, yeah. I got the ADA, people here and everybody else, and I'm a player, so.
And no one's arguing your fault.
I know, it's not me, it's not me, I'm just trying to do what we got to do.
I'm just trying to help.
I don't, I don't want to argue, that's right, go forward. There seems to be a little problem with stuff going on here.
All right, let's, let's move on, let's see what we got going there.
Okay, I would have finished, I'm asking that we make a package with all the, everything that we want, and it's easy contractors, so.
They don't need a package to do, because each one of them is going to do it a little bit different. Some want a new block, some want a new concrete. So we need to do is to walk through, we all come down there, and tell them all, they all look at it, and tell them, you need to go from here to here to here, and get it done, and then you give us a bid.
I'm asking that we put a package together with what we are asking.
How do we do what we're asking? Are you a contractor?
Yes, I am.
Do you have the rights to be able to be a certified contractor? I don't either, that's why I'm telling you.
Why are you large, George, I'm asking for a package with literally instructions for each contractor to get, so that they know what we're asking for. They can submit their bid however they want, concrete blocks.
That's the way it was before. Burnt, that's the way this goddamn bid went out before.
That's, that's, you're missing what I'm saying.
No, I'm not missing a thing you're saying.
Then what's wrong with giving each contractor?
We need a 40-foot ramp up to 10-foot, stepped up to this, up to that, that's it, we got it. They'll get all that, they'll get all that in our, our little package. We're not doing any engineering studies on this thing. They got to come up 20 foot, got a 5-foot ramp, they got to go another, whatever they get to it, that's it.
Mark, in all fairness.
Yeah.
If all this stuff is black and white, and we have them something, and.
That's all not a D and G photo call.
Let me just tell you, if all these people are, I'm saying all these people are there living in this, and you say, we want to go here to here to here to whatever. And they might walk away and say, what are we doing here? But if you give them a, like Bernie's saying, a package, or whatever, something that explains what we want.
They got the ADA package, they got the call roll package. I've read the same DA package, it, it tells me what makes me compliant, but as an engineer, I do do a good job to make a bid. And I want to know how long you want the thing, or if you want the, uh.
If you read that, if you read that, Bernie, you understand, as a contractor, you know how long to make it, you know how long to do what you're going to do.
This is the ancient regulation.
I know, I can't give you a regulation, sorry.
I'm not trying to argue, I'm.
I'm not trying to argue, I'm, and I'm, I'm still going to ask them to do this, the package has instructions for the contractor, so that they all.
Who's gonna write the instructions then? Could be an engineer, could start to shoot him.
I'm not asking for an engineer.
What are we asking for?
So you basically just want them to have a spec, and then a package, or what the.
That shows us that.
So they can have a.
That shows us that.
So that they can have an idea of what they're looking for, and then they can open that.
That's, okay. That thing you have right there, guys, shows us that. And it tells them, how far, we think, oh, that far, you think, oh, twenty foot, or thirty foot, or three hundred foot, and that shows them what to do. Okay, I'm voting off, we, we, we'll get a bid. Okay, we need a motion, go ahead and put that.
Put the ad in paper, put it in the paper, run through the twenty eighth, come in twenty. I'll make the motion to put the ads in the paper, as far as asking for a contract. They'll get the package when they should, they get, or they wanna get, okay, let's ask for the motion.
I know they're right here, on here.
Okay. I'll make the motion to run the bids in paper, as far as, right, from, to, follow up screens, within a hundred miles, I guess, a hundred fifty miles, whichever paper they get. By November twenty eighth. Second?
Second.
Andrew Jackson?
Yes.
Andrew Cameron?
No.
Mr. Bird?
Yes.
Mr. Bird?
Yes.
Mr. Bird?
Yeah. Okay, moving on to business, this is the one that Tyler was talking about earlier, that's through J, uh, C W P. He'll be going to water, and wastewater for us, he's got a license. So he'll also be going to a temporary, if we can get somebody hired.
Has that happened, anyone see that right? This shit.
Now, we're going to hold against the, 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 the.
I'll make the motion, I guess, we gotta be filled with, still, filled out.
We all motion on the floor? We're hearing the way that, I'm, I'm not hearing the way everyone's saying over there. I heard you say, make the motion, and we'll prioritize the, this, this construction.
Is that on the blue tape?
Yeah, the blue.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I see you make one.
Yeah.
Around Marshall, or?
No, 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 I, the water, water. I have water and wastewater. The soup gym.
Do you not have one of the packets there?
Yeah, yeah, it's in there, I was just looking for a while. These estimates, estimates, they're for outside contractors, are they? Forty hours, what do you, you had the best.
That's good information for next month, please.
Where's?
Scotty here.
It's not in here. Yeah, we're, we're, we're.
Would you say it's perfect?
It's not in here, it's not in here.
The, 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 uh, the blue tape, that, that, Scotty. Scotty, Charlie.
I got you, right there, yeah, compliance.
So, uh, water treatment has the A license, wastewater treatment has a B, additional, with the water collection, with the water, to be all types of B, and I have a, ten B, except the laundry.
Right, right. Three hours, that's, that's, that's.
How, right?
That, this one right here. You're right, huh? And right now, make sure I have the waters. That water's part of the C license, but when we move on to the, uh, particular bond, and we put the filtration line in, and then somebody with a D, right, held the D, yes, through, I'll, it's part of the health. And I can re-act my licenses, but can't do this guy, like, but I can't do waters, particularly water, I can do the other ones pretty fairly clear.
So this guy looking for a full time job then, or?
No, I just, it's helping us to do it, uh, here, something.
You can't run a system without, not afraid of, with, uh, personal, we're three days, but, this is.
This is what you and the ladies from the office are doing, that, reading the meters.
Correct.
But that doesn't do it, the water license, they only do the water, they only do the water license, you do the meters and stuff. And they can't go and use a different license for the picture.
Correct.
But they're actually, it's, it's, it's.
No, he's coming up, though, he'll be coming up. He's gotta check everything, he's gotta do everything. Doesn't have a type of job away from the three of you, so that you, you do it.
Better than meters, or meters, or the stuff that don't.
They'll just go out and read meters every month, but this guy will come in.
Can you do the pouring, or they go to the.
He'll do all this stuff.
And no reason I did, I did ask for another bid, or another B bid, and another, some, we beat a, unless they can give me a bid or a set down sign, but we can get somebody in Jersey, to be, others against the sign.
When we get, when we get an employee, they will take over the duty, so they, and, and until someone gets licensed, we'll have this guy. Where are we at on, on the employee?
I can see them everywhere, I can see them on the S M L website, as far as, you told me, there's about three applications, I do. And then we have somebody go, go, be very marginal.
So, can we stand a little meeting on three that we have, so that?
So, if we have water leaking, can this guy come up and?
No, I contacted, uh, the city of Walshburg, the I G, uh, speaking like, the content was I G, the city of Walshburg, today you have our access for.
And turn that.
And I think you turned it out, it's.
That's what we're doing right now. So this guy, what he's doing. When he comes up to check everything, and not charge him mileage and stuff?
It's eighty-five dollars for mileage, he was there.
He says I do not charge for mileage, no?
No, they, 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 they.
What's the, what's the, probably?
Eight hundred a month, huh? And then check services, eighty-five an hour. If, yes, do you mean? If, yes, do you mean, this guy's kind of dickies, so they have, I think they're going, will be billed in five. Right, but, yeah, you're right, but, and he, and here it's dating, on all side, service included. So basically, he's, he's running for eight hundred a month, but he's gotta do something, and charge additionally, eighty-five an hour.
If it's more, yeah.
If it's more, okay.
That's what I need, I'll hold you around.
You made a motion?
Yeah. If we can have, um, I will approve this, but can we have him give you something that's clearer on this, on the pack? And we need to get it, but this is confusing.
Andrew Jackson?
Yes.
Andrew Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Bird?
Yes.
Andrew Bird?
Give resolution, the twenty, twenty-two, ten dash one, federal disaster, uh, Act of two thousand.
Not for what, your work, your money, from that.
Take the motion on that, and we, um, uh, by the county, the county's legislation, uh, and the, 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 uh, two thousand.
So we need an approval to keep this one there?
I didn't, I didn't.
Andrew Jackson?
Yes.
Andrew Cameron?
Sure.
Andrew Bird?
Yes.
Mr. Bird?
Yes.
Come on. Phil McDaniels, hope of work.
He's got a guy in that.
That, that would be, what else? Uh, will they allow him to talk about it, to, 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 to?
Let me just say a little bit about, uh, we're ready to, we're ready to, like, they're still here, here in the league. I think with money, we need to get, uh, an application, uh, for, uh, uh, all incorporated, also the, the, engineers. So, that was part of the tax file, and there's a, like, there's stuff to go with it, and I'll explain it to you, but, uh, we got a lot of stuff going in, and it's all petitioned, too, that's, uh, some, you know, like, uh. All right, that's all I gotta say. Okay, two, twelve, West Main, running for alley behind the house. What's going on with this is that, the house is left there on, on West Main, and there's this little, this was an alley that goes right behind her house, a separation, a, a, so she wants, she wants that closed off, it only uses it for her, right, the garage, and stuff like that. But this.
Not, it's, uh, they work these citizens?
Oops.
Everybody's, uh.
Not between the.
Oh, you mean between the house and the rental, right, oh, okay.
That, because one, that, the, 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 that.
One of that alley, from where, toward the Simpson's house, is the brick house, and then that trailer house they put in? It goes, it runs north west, yeah, and not the one that runs north itself, but the one, in its only sixty foot, or a hundred, or whatever the, length of the yard is.
But, yeah, she wants, she wants a big kid, because, no, usually, but her, and, uh, it's like, so that, yeah, we make kids, she'll take it over in the town, because we, we're a little, that's why you got to the board, like.
Yeah. And stuff like this, does, does, what, does the county get money for any of that stuff, or, you know? Like, the alleys and the old ways and stuff?
Yeah.
So, does it decrease if we take away an alley or a road or something, or is it still there, same?
Still there, I'm, that's the one that, if you want it on the, uh.
Make a motion.
There is a lot of, there is, we told you some.
No.
They, they, they could associate it, and if you don't hit this out, if you're telling them, you do that, if the governor mutually said it, they still, we can still access, or, but there's been there, or, like.
So, make motion to, except with the, the, like, motion to.
What did you use it for?
Whether, can they do it, instead of, we can still access it?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Andrew Jackson?
Yes.
Andrew Cameron?
Sure.
Mr. Bird?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, moving on, nuclear receipts. Let me discuss this before. No, all back. Should I have a package? Is there a list here, for vehicle use?
What's that?
On vehicle usage, is there a list here, of question, is that what you're saying? That's what.
I, you know, you want to set out, like, you, you want something, mine, definitely.
No, I was asking you this, to be able to.
There were a bit like that, issues with, it's the one, the code enforcement, they call Colorado Springs. And I did more research on that, and I found out, first, even as the emergency management, he's not authorized to have red and blue lights.
Case in the original vehicle?
It's an emergency vehicle, but there's guidelines on, you can operate an emergency vehicle, and his classification does not go with it. It's sheriff, it's deputy sheriff, uh.
And he's also part of the fire department, too, so he has authority to do it.
Everything I find out through one attorney and two different policemen, one's law, they're just county police, he doesn't have the authorization to run the lights.
And he doesn't.
The other thing, what they say is that he does. He, he cannot legally drive from Colorado Springs across multiple counties with red and blue lights flashing. He has to be within the zone of emergency, that's well outside the zone. The only thing that is going on with that is he's gotta park his car right home, and two more of our steps. He had, there's no legitimate reason for our town car to go to Colorado Springs. We've been passing ordinance, like, two months ago, saying no person uses town vehicles.
Except for a test vehicle.
Except for what?
For a test vehicle, or, we, they, we.
Okay, well, they should be the same, all, all the way, right. There's no reason for us to.
It's still recommended, for, let's just get it cleaned up, let's get it, let's get it done, and, you know, with it. Let's check into that, see what the, uh, what he asked to do, and whether to sit here and dabble down around, that's, 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 that's.
That's what we were here to discuss. And then, my, my, this guy said, you say, well, it's not discussed.
Well, I don't, I don't have any information, it might, it might affect you to assess any difference, so, can we do it November, that night?
And we cleared it out some night, from last, or?
Well, I didn't know we put it out since, since, I wanna see what the, we do put it up, I wanna see if that's visual.
Yeah, you do it, absolutely, you have that right.
So, table it? Yeah, we'll table that, we, we, I'll make a motion, right into motion, too. Just, I'll make a motion at that point. And any, this is people that think, like, I complain, I'll whether they're, they're definitely, keep that. Cause I know, I don't think I have an information to figure out whether it does or doesn't.
I second the motion.
Your question?
I don't think I quite understand what you're doing.
I'm just saying, we need to look at.
Just give it a.
We get more info?
I'm going right.
How many others need usage, and how did you do it?
Yes. Mr. Piana?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Discussion on human police orders.
Under that particular section, Mr. Mr. Gordon asked, um, to take the power track of the hiring and firing of.
One more, more of the proof that, that what you, you that condition. And if that would stand, then I can read it. Uh, in, in, if the new side of these parts already created, it was coming on play, but they didn't. But if we do that, the board still makes certain, so it's our recommendation, but we still make a decision to hire or fire them. Right? No, I mean, that, yeah, I mean, you can fire them, if there's, but, uh, you'd like, uh, what happened with your, your cell card?
We did go into the exec, executive session on that discussion. I just like had the, the town council should have more involvement in, uh, employment, here hiring and firing.
I agree with you. I thought that's kind of the way we were when we did that with Derrit, but that was kind of.
We didn't get Derrit, but totally fortunately got hired and. That just went over, went under, that's all different things, the firing was things we did, that.
Do you remember, Joe, did you make a motion back?
I wasn't on it.
But you were, who ever did?
I wasn't on it.
I remember I was the mayor, I can't remember what the date was, but, uh.
And I'm going for the, the town, and we went through some, like, uh, a drunk marshal that ended up fired, we went through, uh, a marshal who tased a bunch of kids at the school.
And that was all things before that, that, I didn't think it was.
And I'm not blaming you, Tyra, I'm trying to make point that I would like to have a board make the decision on who represents the town, not one person.
How was it one person now? All the applications, some vice, some vice department?
Alright, how's it, did you hire?
It's all new, that's in the past, you weren't on that first.
I, you asked, you asked me a question. I'm trying to answer it as professionally as I can. One person hired the code enforcement. I would like the hiring of the town people who represent Aguilar to be a group called the town council who makes that decision. Who says is paid, and, you know, it, it should be a group decision, not one person.
Agreed. So you're saying hiring and firing seems to be with the board and the board?
Hiring, hiring, no. I think that she has the right, that if she can't get an employee to work for it, then, you know, she could be able to fire them. But the hiring, I believe, should be a council decision on who works.
And well, generally, I hope it's been doing, but I would think, uh, that, uh, I think you've been doing that for, then how's that? She, uh.
I do, sometimes when I speak, I don't think anyone understands what I'm saying. No one else was involved in hiring code enforcement. I'm saying that people who get hired should be done by the board trustees. She should have the right to fire, she's the one who's responsible for it. She's the one that has to work day to day with them, but the hiring should start here.
It was.
You know, that's the one thing you need to know.
This is not really on the agenda, I mean, it's sort of that.
Well, human resource is vital. You'll have to put that on the, on the next meeting?
No. I, I kind of agree with you, but, yeah. I would, I would not have a responsibility for that to, I mean, there are.
It's a discussion on human resources, which we're discussing.
And I want to, I want to tell you why. We had a big windstorm that took out half the town, we ran it down the, uh, five, uh, seven days, seven or so. We had a bunch of other shit happen. I excuse my language, it happened. And when I talked with Tyra, she said, we need to get somebody in here, she, she kept saying that, we wouldn't. We had Los Angeles County come up here with their code books, and we seen what they were doing. There was no way that this staff in town had enough time to do it. I said, get somebody in here that can do that.
And that should always be an exception for an emergency.
Well, emergency is a cherry on top of that, because we got to get it done. We can't wait until another emergency comes and everything else happens.
Most of us wouldn't open that box of here.
I know. You were here, were you hearing that windstorm, that whole thing set down?
No.
Okay, that. Well, then you should have been, is there any to realize what we're talking about?
I realize emergencies, I realize when there is hurricane, earthquake, volcanoes. There should be an exception for an emergency, it's an emergency through here. I'm talking about day to day employment of personnel. That's not hard to understand.
Oh, we're talking to you every day, so. Well, let's break up that, I'll, I'll take the level.
Sorry, you bring everything in the board?
Yeah.
Can you brush the board? That's what you're talking about, you want it brought to the board for us? I want us to decide on who gets hired, that's the group, that's what I said, everybody brought to us, yes. Motion, huh? Motion. For what? You guys say? Oh, okay. I think a motion that the town council, uh, hires personnel. Second.
Your question?
I think he needs to do it in, uh, very normal without emergency exception.
Yep.
I think emergency stuff, she's building, she must do.
You know, I just built. And I heard, uh, the thing about our, I, I just have a question about the code enforcement, and that part with what you were just saying about the town being out of electricity, what would he do about that?
He's the one who coordinates the, uh, coordinating the city, three guys, generators, all support generators, stuff there. We went through shit, I think, Joe, that's what we had, I mean, we finally got the guys to turn vehicles on and everything. But, I mean, we went through hell, and we were inexperienced in this stuff.
I totally understand it, I just, I just.
A lot of the nats. We had, we had to have those, uh, I can't remember the, who's the, who's gonna get that, uh, off, and everything else. Red Cross fighting, fighting down town here, I mean, we didn't have anything to write in, anywhere.
So, and the county, you just need someone to spear it.
And then their county, the county come up, fighting with the generator, they were gonna plug it in at the school. They couldn't get their goddamn generator to run, we had people come up, try to test the generator. Nothing happened, we were gonna do that stuff so we could do stuff up at school, could do it, so. Thank God Jenny bought down a couple of generators and started cooking meals down at the damn bar down there. Keep people and food and stuff, I mean, there was just a lot of stuff that happened there, a lot of other stuff. And, uh, we just, I mean, we were ill prepared, I mean, we were really ill prepared to do this stuff. We never expected anything like that to happen, you know?
And we have to draw all the worries, personally, right now.
We got all the roads, all the, yeah, we're, all the guys, a lot of the utility park around everywhere. We got the generators up to all the wells, all that stuff was going on, kind of keep that going on. I mean, we just had bad, uh, that thing going on, we never expected that, so. Absolutely excited, uh, that we needed to bring something like that in. And Trigga had a pretty, or, uh, Los Angeles done, and had a pretty good emergency plan. And they did come up with, with the stuff they bought us, and they were still there. So we said, you know, and that's when we talked to the state emergency people, state program. Said, you guys need to look at a plan, and they're figured out what you're gonna do. And it doesn't, that thing don't happen overnight, it takes a lot of time.
A lot of time, sure, that.
It's like this goddamn organization plan, and stuff takes a lot of time and a lot of career.
And that's where we're getting off of what I just asked for. I just asked that the town council be able to do the hiring of new employees. I understand emergencies, I'm not asking for her not to have the right to fire. I'm just saying that the application to come in, as we do all contractors, that we, as a board, have got the decision to hire, that's all.
So we'll, we'll back to one other thing. That started all this stuff, the Tyra getting the county administrator, you know, the hire and fire. And she brings it to the council, who she gonna hire, who she gonna fire. And that's basically, there's a problem there, she does it, that's, uh, what we do as our county administrator.
I'm not trying to take a life for Tyra on her voice, on who she prefers to be hired. I think she should have the right of saying that. I'm just asking that the town council actually does the hiring and sets the pace.
We do, the board recommends it to us, and we still have it.
Can I say something?
Go ahead, Mr. Ma.
The ordinance that created the town administrator, you guys need to read that. This specifies in there what has, what the administrator can do. And I haven't seen anything in it that says that the town board has the authority to do whatever. You know, you, you've got to either change that ordinance or to bite like, you guys ask the, the lit bike.
And I thought that you said, like, one of the new applicants? I thought that they had to come in, that's what they said, that they, they were waiting to be able to be interviewed by the board. Maybe we just need to straighten up the confusion on whether it is or isn't.
That's right, you're right, so.
Um, so I don't think it's going to be worth.
At this point, I'm, I gotta go back to, I gotta look at that, I gotta look at that.
Mr. Price?
Would you vote for him?
No. I don't remember what that ordinance said, I gotta look at that ordinance, if I hire or fire.
Can I have no problem with that, the council wants, and the board, and the.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm not wrong with it either, I just. I gotta go back and look and see what we get, that, when, I think, yes, six, seven years ago.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
I'm going to see if I can, you know, what.
Did you hear all about, I should, you know? Thank you.
Okay. Full, full of the bills.
Wait, you're referring to that? Um, the utility applications, when you're wanting to, uh. Say, utility applications, when you're wanting to energy for.
I'm going to look at that, pretty much, the college was for, for.
There's three applicants that I'd like to jump, oh, when do we want to meet them, as fast as possible, are they? As quick as possible, we, oh, I can sell them, yeah. Wait, wait, so I don't.
Looking at, that's the lead?
Okay, hold on a minute, I got scrutinized for not being able to meet. We might possibly have one week left, can you give me that?
I understand that, I, I have a problem with that. I have a little problem.
About two weeks, Joe.
That'll work in two weeks, I'll make the work for that.
So, we're looking at whatever that.
I'll make the work for that. No, not this week, we got, uh.
No, we're ready, thank you.
Yeah, 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 we'll do, we're all working.
I'm screwed with you, Joe.
No, I don't, uh, I'll, I'll do it. Can't sit with me, sorry, you guys. What time?
Six o'clock, huh?
Yes. The, the, the thing, that new thing. Where, where you.
He's, he's still, like, they, he's, he's.
When you're calling my name, I'm not.
He is, oh, okay, alright, good, and that.
Yeah, full of the bills.
Um, that's the, uh, twenty, twenty, you can't go where it's, you're not someone.
Go for, yeah, go for it, Joe.
I think it's worth, uh, two bucks, two years, something.
Yeah, I, I love that, I, you know, I just think, uh, it's not. Would you say that? Now, I think it'd be, do you know what I'm gonna do? Do that, yes, you did? Yeah, okay, sure, I'm glad you feel good, love, you did. So I'll make a motion, say, move the bill.
Your question?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Major Price?
Yes. Vermont.